Good evening. I am the Merrill Area Public School Board President Kevin Blake, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to introduce the members of the Mass. Board of Education. Immediately to my left, to the right, Vice President Brett Waller, Clerk Ron Liberty, Treasurer Paul Prue, Norbert Knob's Ashbeck, Amber Gerizo, Jacqueline Gremler, Mike Hornisher, and John Smith. Also joining us on stage later will be Superintendent Shannon Murray, Director of Business Services, Mark Paul. I want to remind everyone the parliamentary procedure will be followed at this meeting. Please take note, you can find the notice publication on your green handout. Ground rules and border qualifications on the blue handout, hours of the annual meeting on the yellow handout. I ask that anyone that speaks at the microphone clearly states their full name, whether or not they're a district resident in at least 28 days, and if they're a qualified voter, meaning age 18, on your before today. I'd like to start this evening with a pre-opening statement. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's annual meeting and budget hearing. Thank you for your attendance tonight. A couple of quick points and we can move on to tonight's meeting. I'd like to take a moment and thank everyone in the district, starting with staff and students, for doing the best that they can, staying positive and doing whatever it takes. We have been in continuing challenging times, but we're turning a corner. Stay strong and stay positive. Believe it or not, we understand and do care. We know it isn't easy. We know that it's not always perfect. We know that things don't always go as planned. But we all are trying our best and doing our part to save education to the students and Merrill Area Public Schools. I ask one thing as we continue to go forward together on this journey, and that's for everyone, student, staff, board members, and citizens of the Merrill Area alike, please believe in the process, stay focused, and do so while assuming positive intent by all involved. As I can tell you for certain, the Merrill Area Public Schools is doing its very best to safely educate our youth. Please continue to work together and do what's best for our students, staff, and our community. Thank you. At this point on our agenda, I'd like to request nominations for the election of chairperson. Is there a motion? Ron?
Motion to nominate Kevin Blake as chairperson.
We have a motion by Ron Liberty to nominate myself, Kevin Blake, as chairperson. Do we have a second? Paul? Prue? We have a second. Are there other nominations for the election of chairperson? Are there other nominations for the election of chairperson?
No nomination.
Now, to move that nominations be closed, then we will vote. Do we have a second on that? Second by Paul Prue. All those in favor of the motion for me to be chairperson signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I will proceed as the chairperson for tonight's meeting. This time, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda. Do we have that motion this evening? We have a motion by Knob's Ashbeck. Do we have a second? Second by Mike Hornisher. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next, I entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and accept the minutes to the last annual meeting as they appear on the pink handout. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Ron Liberty. Do we have a second? Second by Knob's Ashbeck. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
All abstaining.
We have John Smith, Amber Gerizo are abstaining. Motion to dispense with the reading of minutes and accept the September 18, 2023 annual meeting budget hearing minutes as they appear on the pink handout carries on a voice vote with the noted abstentions. At this point, I'd like to direct you to our Treasurer, Paul Prue, for the treasurer's report.
Good evening. The highlights of the 2324 year hours follows. There was an increase in general fund, fund ten balance of $279,555. Current fund balance is at $8,936,842. Board of Education policy states that the fund balance shall be maintained at a level sufficient to minimize short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes. The fund balance shall not fall over 14% of the prior year's fund ten and fund twenty-seven that expenses. The current percent of fund balance is 21.53%. Remaining ESSR dollars will be committed to spend by September of 2024. Fund twenty-seven and fund twenty-nine do not carry a fund balance based on WUFAAR and GADB accounting guidelines. There was a transfer of $1 million from fund ten to fund forty-six at the end of the 2324 fiscal year. These funds can only be used for capital projects. The current fund balance in fund forty-six is $2,415,114. The food service, fund fifty, fund balance was reduced in 2324. This is the result of replacing equipment including dishwasher, cafeteria tables, milk coolers, and increased operational costs. The community service fund, fund eighty, funds middle school activities and pool operations. There's currently a positive balance of $20,074 at the end of the 2324 fiscal year. We appreciate anyone taking the time to attend the annual meeting, and where we do information at the annual meeting, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual meeting and convene the board here. Do we have that motion? Motion by Paul Prue. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline Gremler. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to adjourn the annual meeting and convene the budget hearing carries unanimously on a voice vote. The electors have the right to be heard on the proposed budget. The electors do not approve the budget. The electors do vote on the local tax levy needed to implement the budget. However, in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 120.12, brand three, the school board, on your before November 1st, determines the amount necessary to operate and maintain the district's schools and on your before November 6th certifies the final tax levy. At this time, I would like to introduce Director of Business Services, Mark Paul, so we can outline the 2425 budget and the resulting levy from the financial pages of the 2425 budget book.
Good evening. The slide presentation will follow as closely as can to the budget booklet, budget booklet or intermediate booklet, financial startup page 11. I'll give the thousand people here a chance to find it in the budget booklet. All right. Just an overview of school finance for a reminder for the audience and school board members. We are under a revenue limit since 1993 that basically limits the amount of taxes and school aid that a district can generate in a given year. There are exceptions to the revenue limit, but basically it's based on three-year rolling average in prior years expenditures and revenues. I'll go more detailed as we as well through the rolling limit. Basically, the school district budgets are divided into different funds for government, accounting, and DPI. Those are a list of the funds that I will go more detailed later on in the presentation, but this kind of gives you an idea of where we are as far as maps. And the general fund is the main operational fund, also fund twenty-seven is a special fund, so those are the two biggest funds usually that we have to operate. As I said before, the history of revenue limits has been in place for about 30 years. And the way it works, as you can see here, it's a combination of state aid, tax levy, and that gives us the revenue limit. And it's kind of a balancing act. As aid goes up, levy goes down, and vice versa. So in the past, districts sometimes based on their enrollments have big swings, whether it's related to enrollments or state funding from year to year. There are things that are outside the revenue limits that help with the budget. Those are category aids, which include special ed, library, transportation, and more class-sized aid, which is called SAGR, AGR at this point. Federal and state grants, student fees, referendum that is approved by the electorate for debt service, and then the community service fund is also outside of the revenue limit. Clear. What is the revenue limit? As I said before, it's property tax, general state aid, and computer aid. It's also a tax levy for non-referendum debt, where to borrow money without a referendum approval, we would need to take that off the top. And then if we would tax for capital projects, that would also come under the revenue limit. However, as Paul indicated, we have a pretty significant fund balance in our fund forty-six we'll talk about later, that we don't need to do the property tax levy for capital projects at this time. So going forward with the 202425 budget, the DPI last year increased the low-cost ceiling for all school districts to $11,000 per student. They also then added 325 on top of that. The way the state budget is written, there will be another 325 on top of that this year to help make up for the lack of increases over the past couple of years under the revenue limit. Our special ed funding will remain at 33% for '25, and we were beginning some additional money from the state for mental health, school-based services, at $31,000 per student. As Paul also indicated, we are towards the end of our ESSR funds. We have about $990,000 that we had at the beginning of the year. We've allocated all of those for purchases related to building improvements, professional development, curricular items, and technology. As I mentioned before, the revenue limits in our aid are based on student enrollments. We take counts on the third Friday in September and the second Friday in January each year. As you can see, in the last six years, we've gone from about 2,500 students to 2,200 students on our third Friday count. And obviously, that affects our revenue limits I indicated before, so it's approximately 240-plus students, 340-plus students that have... That's wrong. Actually, just as we with the birth rates and everything, we are losing students as is common throughout the state. We short-term borrow to finance our operations. The last five years, you can see, we've been going down in the amount that we have to borrow. This is because our fund balance has been increasing. This helps with meeting cash flow needs before our taxes come in, but also it shows that we are financially strengthened and have a significant fund balance for when we do go borrow, whether it's through a referendum or for this actual short-term borrow for the cash flows. As I mentioned before, we have a long-term capital improvement trust fund, fund forty-six. This is a state law that allows us to allow school districts to build up dollars in a separate fund to address capital needs without going to referendum. The last four years, you can see, the trend that we have there started out pretty significant, but down as we were addressing some of the capital needs in the district, and then as was reported, we did add about $1 million to the fund balance this year. Going forward, that will help address a lot of the capital, some of the capital needs that we have. As we talked about fund balance, what is fund balance? It's basically a number that we have in the, that's necessarily in the bank or in cash, but it's an accounting number that we have at the end of the year. So as I said before, we have about $8.9 million in our fund balance. That shows the strength of the district, and then we can use that to limit the amount of money we need to borrow to meet operational needs until our taxes come in. As was said before, district auditors like to have us be at 20% to 25%. We have a board policy that shows that says that should be a minimum of 14%. So we're about 21.5, so we are on our way to meeting the 20% to 25% goal that the auditors recommend. You can see here the history of the fund balance since June of 15. It's kind of torn up and down a little bit. Over the last couple of years, we started a good trend going up to where we are at the 21.3, based on the amount that we had audited in June of this year. This represents the revenues that we receive in fund ten, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. Biggest part of our revenues are from the local taxes and the state. It comes to about 70% of how we generate the revenue. The rest is federal monies, inter-district money, which is open enrollment, and then some state grants as well. On the expenditure side, the same funds we use, you can see that 60, almost 61% of our expenses are related to a big portion thereof salaries and benefits, which is not unusual for a school district. This is a history of our mill rate, which is our debt rate based on equalized value. You can see that it has gone down significantly in the last couple of years based on paying off debt and increased aid from the state. We're projecting to have about a 5.25. We want that final number until we get the aid from the state, but as a comparative basis, Moses and Nix is 5.9, DC Iris is 7.4, and Washington is 8.8, so we are below somewhere near us around here. So this is our, the left, or the right column here is our 2425 proposed budget for the general fund. We can see its revenue expenditure balance at about 32, 39.2 million. The other two columns are prior two years of the expenditures. You can see the comparison there. As I mentioned before, we have different funds that we have budget separated into fund 21 and fund 29 called special projects. Fund 21 is student activity counts, and then fund 29 is our head start, which we get most of our funding from the state and federal government for that. Fund 27 is our special ed fund that we have transfers from the general fund every year to offset expenditures. There is no fund balance in fund 27. Fund 39, fund 30 here are used to track debt. We currently do not have any debt, which is unusual for a school district, but it was the last of it was paid off, I believe, last year or two years ago. Fund 50 is our food service fund. We provide universal free breakfast, and our fund balance is $277,000, but that is coming down, so we have to look at that carefully to maintain the result. So we will be renewed net over the course of 2425 school year. Fund eighty is the community services fund. We have increased cost for athletics, or I'm sorry, aquatics and lifeguards. We also have now school resource officers being coded to this fund, and we are creating a community education, a community adult education program in 2425. So based on prior year, this has run up. However, it's offset by lowering of our other levy through increased state aid. It's a separate levy. It needs to be said at the annual meeting a little bit, like the fund eight and the fund ten levy as well. Fund balance in there is, as Paul indicated, is a little over $20,000. So as far as the post-development goes, the next steps are, we are waiting for our general aid certification, which is usually released around 15, and we can then finalize our budget and levy. And then on the 23rd, the board will adopt the updated budget for the school year in the approval paper as recorded by state law. Looking ahead, we continue to have capital needs that we will be looking at and addressing as we go forward here in the next year or two. We still have decline in enrollment, as that was indicated before. And after this current year, there's going to be a new state by any budget, and nobody has any clue what's going to happen then, based on prior years, you might not know until next summer. So that's kind of where we are with district finances. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mark. This time, I entertain a motion to reconvene to the annual meeting. So we have a motion by Paul Prue, and we have a second. Second by Ron Liberty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion to reconvene to the annual meeting carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next, behind the board members, we have Resolution A. On the screen, I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution A exactly as stated on the screen. Do we have that motion? Motion by Knob's Ashbeck. Do we have a second? Second by Mike Hornisher. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to adopt Resolution A exactly as stated on the screen carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next, we have Resolution B on the screen. I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution B. We have a motion by Shannon Murray. Is there a second? Second by Megan Kowler. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? I will abstain. Other board members perhaps abstaining as well. Motion to adopt Resolution B as stated on the screen carries on a voice vote with the noted abstentions. Next, we'll move to Resolution C. I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution C as stated on the screen. We have a motion by Brett Waller. Do we have a second? Second by Ron Liberty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to adopt Resolution C exactly as stated on the screen carries unanimously on a voice vote. This time, my pleasure to introduce Superintendent Shannon Murray. He will go with the state of the district with you. Shannon?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Murray. I'm superintendent of schools here in Merrill, and I appreciate everybody thinking, I think that we were doing this tonight on YouTube after... 2324 was an exciting school year here. We have a number of new people in key positions, leadership positions in our district that fill those roles very well, and have begun to make a change in our district who goes on leadership positions. We also were able to engage in a very community-involved facilities plan to help us focus on making investments for our best facility school year, and I was pleased with that process, and I think the work product came out of that. Unfortunately, that did not pass, and so we will be talking about the impact of that later in the quarter or later today. And then lastly, 2324 brought us kind of a new approach to school improvement and organization improvement in Merrill, and we've raised a new philosophy of how we approach our work in the district, and that has started to gain a lot of momentum. It's got excellent alignment, right at the end of the year, excellent alignment, and we look forward to continuing that to go on in 2425 school year. Couple of years ago, I shared with our staff, a little district staff, kind of a story about Duke basketball, Cleveland's basketball coach, who was monitoring her athletes to not wait for things to get easier until they know. And so her message to her team was, instead of waiting for things to get easier, get better at the hard stuff. And that's been kind of our mantra here in Merrill for the last two years. We want to get better at the hard stuff, and we keep that message going forward. And so last year, we started getting better at the hard stuff, which in our case, we determined was literacy and student development behaviors, and that is where we are working moving into the 2425 school year. So as we approach 2425 as a school year, again, we want to keep getting better at the hard stuff, and that, of course, continues to be literacy and community student development, mental health, and student behavior. Some board and in the handouts, we have trying to do our key opportunities and challenges that we've been tackling this year. First and foremost, that 20, which is a new state law that focuses on really literacy, and thanks to the leadership of Matt Patterson and others, we're a little bit ahead of the curve on that, and I'm really proud of the fact that we're in a good position to do that. It's a very intensive training process with a new approach, the science reading approach. It's a new for me in Wisconsin, and Amanda's done just an excellent job of getting us in a good place, and so we're heading down that path. In fact, last year, we had a kiosk approved for the 2425 school year that built in four days in service for grades four, and now we're going on in school because we have so many people trained in environment self shortages. That is a pretty difficult way to tackle that problem in 2020. We're grateful that we have support for that, and that will take place this year. Student behavior continues to be an issue in many districts, especially post-COVID, and we're tackling that issue this year by adopting the state of civil schools model, which was brought in in part with Amber Luska, our territory services. And that is a model and framework that we introduced to our staff on the first basic school this year that ties into our model of being aligned, PK12. What that does is it talks about building structures, adult structures, maybe adult behaviors to help students, building those structures and sharing expectations and having consistency in those expectations and communicating those things and observing, intervening when needed, and building positive relationships with students. All three ends in the end are enhancing student management. So we're kind of at the, maybe the top of the first meeting of that project, we have had some training through that, and so you're going to classrooms, dynamics, and those things have been being implemented, the goals, the kind of staff tool that we could use right away, and we're excited with our progress that we have in our leadership. The board also approved the second SRO, and that went through the city council, was approved when it was last meeting, so assuming that position can be built up, it would be awesome. Of course, it's actually going to be a little proactive, build some relationships with students, instead of just being responsive to things as they arrive, and so we'll be able to work with that and track the progress of that. Last year's failed referendum has led to maps pursuing the sale of J.R.'s elementary property, which spent a few, for a number of years, close to consolidation. And so that process is going on in a big place between now and April 24th, when the board will look at offers and purchase and make a decision on that as well. And then once that process, or once that sale is finalized, then we can continue the discussion about the rest of our facility. students, instead of just being responsive to things as they allow, so we'll be looking to that and try to progress on that. Last year's failed referendum has led to maps pursuing the sale of J.R.'s elementary property, which spent a few number of years close to consolidation. And so that process is going on in a big place between now and April 24th, when the board will look at offers and purchase and make a decision on that as well. And then once that process or once that deal is finalized, then we can continue the discussion about the rest of our district, the overall strategic plan, the segments, which I'll give to the second. We'll also continue to address the PPOS situation at Byrd Elementary, or Byrd School Young Learners. And we've worked with the DNR now, more recently the EPA. We're waiting on the EPA grant to get through that next phase of that process and see how that works as well. We will continue, as Mark alluded to, the financial landscape gets kind of tricky, but I will say I'm very proud of the work that we've done. As far as our ability to build a fund balance, a really solid percentage. To build Fund 46, the management we've done in these times is remarkable. To have short-term borrowing reductions or need reductions is really a tribute to a lot of people who are in the spotlight there. As Mark might have been open, second year will be biennial budget, and so going into this year, we do what we have, because of the budget. Next year gets a little trickier. All education, people I've talked to and others seem to think that 325 will carry it forward, but we'll monitor that as we build the budget moving forward and build a solid budget based on where that may happen. Of course, it's important for all of us to continue to be really good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and we want to make sure that we are using resources and investment to maximize student achievement. Staff challenges that continue to be an issue at many, many school districts, and over the last year and the before, we've had some discussions about continuing to pay some benefits and pay, and now we're having to focus more and more on discussions on growing our own. We encourage our own people to enter education in the profession and staying in our communities, and so we'll continue to foster that moving forward as well. Of course, the achievement goal always remains our top priority, and we'll continue to do so. We have developed as part of our new organizational improvement model, Theory of Action, which is essentially our playbook. We share that with our whole staff, every member of the gallery, publish it, go through it, and it's just, it's a solid playbook on what good instruction looks like and what good learning looks like. And so we continue to do that with a particular focus on literacy, literacy assessment, and our professional learning. Of course, Virginia Virtual Academy continues to be a model of virtual learning in Wisconsin, and we really, really applaud the work that John Agameister has proved done. And once again, they were named the top virtual high school in the state of Wisconsin, which is something that we want to be very, very proud of. Then lastly, the board did approve the creation of a community education program here in Merrill, which will provide our community an opportunity to adult in our community to take low-cost, high-interest courses in the evenings that are taught by fellow community members as a way to get community into our buildings, build relationships with our community and strengthen that over the course of the year. So we're really excited for that, and we look forward to seeing what that can do. Those courses are expected to start running this winter, and so more on that. So the goal again is really to focus on literacy. Literacy is the hard stuff in our district, and we want to make sure that we keep after that. We have seen some encouraging progress this past year, but there's still plenty of work to do, and we all recognize that, and so that will stay in the forefront of our work. Particularly, we will continue to use our hundred-day planning process to focus on literacy assessment, the reform of the assessment that we started last year, and the alignment. And if there's one thing that I'm perhaps most proud of as superintendent, that we are aligned. And so the processes that we use now, the language that we use, the expectation from PK 4, it's getting very, very tight alignment, so it's easier for us to monitor, measure, and improve, and those kind of things, which is very different than our previous experiences. So we made some really excellent progress there. I'm very excited to see what can come of our state and civil schools efforts. Already we're seeing some progress at the middle school. They're just a bit delayed there because they are NPA on that, and so we're looking forward to see what that kind of alignment and common expectations and common communications and students moving from grade to grade knowing the language that brings us to select. And then this will all be going to the board as a specific planning process proposal that will address some of the facility planning issues that we have and fiscal responsibility, those kinds of things that are going forward in the context of maximizing school achievements of our management. As far as the board are concerned, I'm sure this is with our staff, every company together, those aren't super flashy literary goals. That's just solid improvements, solid education, solid organizational improvement that we measured, and we do apologize for that in terms of business. That's how we're going to manage your board. So with that, I'll kind of wrap it up. I am proud to be the superintendent. I appreciate the hard work that our board does and our staff. We put together an excellent leadership team. We've got a great staff, and so some really good things are happening here. I'm really excited about the things we've been able to accomplish in this short period of time. I think we're trending very favorably, and I look forward to seeing what we can go and what goes ahead. And I just think we've got them in front of maps, and I appreciate what you guys do, what you guys do. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Continuing along on the agenda, we're up to item number 11 under other business. This time, I would entertain a motion to set the next annual meeting budget hearing date for September 15, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. We have a motion. Motion by Paul Prue. Second, Nub Ashbeck. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion to set the next annual meeting budget hearing for September 15, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. carries unanimously on a voice vote. This time, I entertain any other matters provided by law relating to the management of school districts prepared. Please step forward to the microphone, and if you're looking to make your comments, must state your name clearly and verify that you are a school district president and is a taxpayer. Anyone wanting to make any statements? Otherwise, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nub Ashbeck. We have a second. Second by Mike Hornscher. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn carries unanimously on a voice vote. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.